Pastor, Senior Pastor from TEG Church is here to lead us in the pledge and say that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's lead us in a prayer for the meeting tonight. I'll start with a verse of scripture. Thank you so much for allowing me this honor of being here tonight. In 1st Timothy chapter 2, I urge you first of all to pray for all people. Ask God to help them. Intercede on their behalf and give thanks for them. Pray this way for kings and all who are in authority, so we can live peaceful and quiet lives, marked by godliness and dignity. Let's pray. Tonight we are reminded of the scripture because the command is to pray for those in authority, and these are our authorities. These are our civic leaders. Pray for wisdom. Give this council an understanding mind to govern the people. Pray for discernment. Help them to know the right things to do. We pray there be instruments of God, that is, to be the hand of God extended for good in this community, Lord. We pray that God's will is done, and we know that your will is good. Pray all to the glory of God, Jesus Christ. Amen. May I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second.
Rent motions. Krista seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Citizen comments. Anyone that would like to come and speak, you have three minutes. It's your time to visit and sharing your comments or thoughts. We'll be here to listen. So I'll open at the time for citizen comments. Going once, going twice. We'll close citizen comments. Let's come back next week. Before we continue, there's a couple of things I'd like to do. First, I'd like to recognize our new library director, Carrie Walton. I'm going to mispronounce your last name, but Carrie, why don't you stand up and please say aye. We're so happy to have you here. Congratulations. Today's event at the library, there was like three million kids there.
Yes, there were, yes.
Of course, I have a hard time counting, one, two, three, one nine, two nine. But no, it's a great event, and the library is a tremendous asset of our community. We appreciate the work that you do, so thank you. And then, next, I'd like to introduce Brian Schrak, our new Assistant City Administrator. Brian, we're happy to have you onboard and look forward to great things. We continue to move things forward, but welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here this evening. Okay, moving on to export a conflict of interest declaration. I'd like to give the council a chance to declare any conflicts of communication that they've had that might influence their ability to consider today's agenda. I am just in question. Consider agenda. May I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay. Grant made a motion. Krista second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Unfinished business. City Administrator, Craig, cross out.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. The Lider Park Trail Connecters, this is a project that's been on our agenda here for the last couple of council meetings. It's an interesting project because it doesn't really quite fit perfectly within our normal process of doing things. You know, we've tried, we've been trying to get this punched across the goal line, and we've had a few different variables that we've been hoping to work through. One of those variables just has to do with the sheer cost of hiring an outside engineering firm to do the design and survey work to put together a full plan set. Any outside engineering firm that you call, I'd probably recommend that you need one of those, and we made those calls. And the price that we were given was way more than we felt necessary to pay. And so what we would like to do is work with our city engineering staff to value engineer this project. Their project's schedule right now is quite busy, if you can imagine all the work that we have going on in our community. This is more of a filler project, so it wouldn't be one to get cut out of the way. But by working with them to value engineer the work, we will probably save the community close to $20,000 or $30,000 based on all the research we've done in the last few weeks. So to us, there's value in working with the folks we know and doing it that way versus bringing in an outside firm. It might be able to get to it quicker, but they're kind of impressing upon us things that we feel like we don't need. So one of the other issues with going this route is that it doesn't give us a full design plan set that we can send out to bid for dirt contractors to develop and we bid on. We have found a firm, McPherson Backo Inc., that is comfortable working with city staff and our city engineering firm on, you know, doing this work for us or considering a sole source contract with them. It's McPherson Backo. And so that's kind of where we're at today. This was sort of Plan A, two council meetings ago, and the council wanted us to look at bringing in an outside firm to do the engineering, and that's the work that we completed the last couple of weeks, and the pricing just wasn't right. So we're bringing this to you now today with these two options. The front option, or the top one, number one, that would be for the work with McPherson Backo Inc. as well as an amount budgeted for an amount of survey and some design with Harland's team at CEB. So basically, we took, the $25,000 was the base bid from McPherson Backo Inc., and we budgeted some contingency into that, and then an amount for Harland and his team's work, and we've come with that $37,000. We also have a price for this boardwalk. If we add that in there, and this was pricing that our city planner Tina put together for us, and if we went with adding in the boardwalk, it would increase that price up to about $53,000. So the difference is pretty much all in the material for the boardwalk. And look at those two different options. Over the weekend, Councilman Trailer and I had some discussion about another option. He actually found a company that has some pretty nice boardwalks at 175 feet of running foot, and it's for a six-foot wide one. What we're looking at doing, if we did a bridge, it would only be on one of these crossings. It would be on the smaller of the two, this one right here. And so I guess what I would like to know is if the council would be interested in looking, I guess I'll call it a third option. These bridges that we found, I felt like were nicer, more what we were looking for compared to this one here. And Sarah, I don't know if you have access to your email back there, but I sent you a few photos on the fly a few minutes ago of this other option. If we could share the council those photos real quick. And take your time. Sorry for putting you on the spot. So maybe while she works to pull those up, I guess my question to you guys would be, are you wanting to go with that base amount, I think it was 37? Or are you interested in maybe spending another $10,000 or $15,000 to have a bridge on one of these?
You know, I looked, the park inland doesn't even look like there's a, are you, you're going to actually take some of that dirt out?
Yes, part of this work.
It's awful muddy anyway.
Yes, so there's a drainage channel through there. And that's part of the reason why the engineering firms are wanting to charge us an arm and two blades is because they want to spend all this time going in there and doing all this design work to account for that drainage channel. I think what we would do is just reshape it rather than going that longer route.
But the one closer to us here looks like it's a bigger.
It's much more, it's much bigger and it's much longer than the further west one. See if I can get the picture up. She's working on bringing those pictures up. But is it the, which is the furthest east one? Spruce?
I mean, Spruce is west.
Spruce is west. So pine is significantly longer and it's a deeper channel.
What's the estimate just on the dirt work for?
$25,000.
For both sides?
Mm-hmm. And that would just be dirt work, a culvert or two, and a concrete blocking path. See, this is the bridge system that Councilman Trailer had found. And those were 175 feet of running foot for a six-foot wide one. We would have some hauling costs due to location, I believe they're in Missouri.
I just, that's, that car I had shipped from Idaho Falls. Idaho was $1,400 to have it shipped from Idaho. So I mean, yeah. But this is only in Missouri, Joplin, I think, isn't it?
I like the rail, is this offline? Is there some sort of OSHA requirement?
Yes.
I think, I think any bridge like that, we'd have to put, we need to put a rail on the side because it's a hauling thing.
I kind of like these better than the ones that we had priced. If you guys gave us expenditure authority to go with this option, we would obviously vet the source a little bit better than we have today. We would just ask you to give us that latitude to our staff to vet that source a little further. I did some math, and at 175 feet of linear foot, I mean, within my expenditure authority, I could guess about 35 feet worth of bridge.
So over both bridges?
Just for one. 35 linear feet at 175 is about $10,000.
Officer Trailer, do you know, is that wood pipe or metal pipe? Metal pipe presentation?
Yeah, it's metal. It's all metal.
Metal pipe, right.
Yeah, there's some more pictures in there that shows the construction of it.
Those are the ones we had, Councilman. So the base is, the base is either aluminum or steel on the form? The base is a?
No, no, it's steel underneath, but then they put the wood on.
Which is wood, a deposit?
Right.
So if you guys wanted to go with that option, we would go with number one here, and then just an additional, I think, $10,000 expenditure authority with the option to further vet the source of that bridge. That'd probably be what we'd be looking at. Or if you want no bridges at all, we can just go with option one. I'm not a big fan of the, this one here, just because it doesn't have the railing and stuff like that, and we'd have to, we'd have to do some additional work on that. So just to break it down, it's engineering involved, and then it's right, you have dirt work involved, and then we got the, that's right?
So option one also has the concrete block paths all the way across already, right? And we go with the bridge and deletes that, so they're going to, they're going to give us a little break.
Some of it. There's still going to be concrete up to the bridge itself. The bridges are going to run the entire length from the residential roads. But basically, the base bid for the dirt work, concrete culverts, we're considering that all within the base, but that's $25,000. And we've got about $12,000 in the design engineer. Again, it's not a full design. We just need enough to have some surveys or some TOPO, and then to give an idea of quantities to the person doing the dirt work. And then if we went with the bridge, then we showed you what Councilman Trailer found. We'd ask for an additional $10,000 in expenditure authority, so it'd be $37,000 plus $10,000.
Let's go.
Okay. I make, I make a motion that we approve the $37,000 plus $10,000.
Grant made some motion?
I second.
Krista seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to apologize. I don't really prefer to make sausage from the bench during a city council meeting, but we felt like after having this as an item of business for the third meeting in a row, it's time to make a little sausage from the bench and get it moved through.
Good work. That's right. Good work. That's the end of our addition to the park.
This item, it's also been one that's been kind of dangling out there for a little bit, but we're pretty happy with the outcome here, so hopefully it'll be too. When we first started this research, we were at well over six figures plus to put a lighting in Lider Park West Side around the trail. Why is that important? We'd like an opportunity for an outdoor amenity that promotes active lifestyles for our second and third shift workers, or folks that just like to get up early in the morning when it's dark out. We want them to feel safe, you know, while they're outside exercising. So you can see where the light poles would go. They'd be 270-foot intervals. I think we've got a tin count there. So we, our city planner Tina Powell, this is her project. And she's been working with Evergy, and then she put out a request for bid to acquire a boring contractor that would do the directional boring to put in the CIB wire. In the agenda packet, you can see we had three or four bids on that. The low bid came in at $17,193 from Ready. We had some from a couple of other companies too that were higher than that. Here is what these look like. They're actually fiberglass. I think somewhere I had wrought iron mistakenly. So all told, it would be $38,000. You have down here the breakdown. The actual poles themselves are $16,000. The cost to bore in the CIB wire so we can serve them power, $17,000. And then the pole bases are $5,000. And we also have $1,800 annually to Evergy. However, any of these are damaged or something like that, they go in and replace them without charging us, and then that also pays for the cost of the power. That's our recommendation, and we'd be glad to take any questions.
Any questions? Couple of moments. I entertain a motion here.
I make a motion to approve the Lider Park Sun Prairie Sunset Trail Lightning Project.
I agree.
Krista made the motion. Grant seconds. Aubrey shut out of here. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, there's two projects from our annual goal setting session that was checked off, so we're moving.
That's great. Thank you.
This evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have a clear announcement that would need a sound waiver ordinance passed. First item is a sound waiver ordinance, meaning fireworks display for the lighting club. The lighting club would like to have a Fourth of July firework celebration on July 5th between the hours of 7:00 and 10:00, 15:00 p.m. Be held, the baseball field is located at Clark Davidson Elementary School at 333 Softwater at McDonner. During the event, there may be the use of amplified sound, which requires a sound waiver. If the sound is plainly audible, it extends about 150 feet. This would require the sound waiver ordinance as well as allow such sound amplification. The current regulations are found in the State Code, Chapter 11, Article 13, under Loud Noises, and Chapter 7, Article 3 for the biolics. The City Council is considering waiving the sound ordinance as it pertains to amplified sound and settlement permit for firework display. There's a small publication fee for the ordinance, and the legal has been approved as before. It's recommended that the City Council waive the reading of the ordinance with a voice vote, and then adopt the ordinance with roll call.
Questions? May I entertain a motion to, and some waiver reading?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Aubrey makes the motion. Grant seconds. Krista seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, I need a roll call. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
First. I'll make the motion to adopt. Then second that. All those in favor say aye. Oh, this is roll call, yeah.
Councilmember calls? Yes. I'm Mary.
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll do this again one more time.
So now there's the sound waiver ordinance for Perez, Jan Torres, and Goddard Resonance has requested temporary suspension of the noise ordinance for purposes of music in a live band concert to be held at 202 East South Street in Goddard as part of the Goddard High School class of 1994's upcoming reunion on July 27th from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. During this event, there may be use of amplified sound, which requires the sound ordinance. If the sound is plainly audible, it extends about 150 feet. So again, the regulations for the sound is Chapter 11, Article 13 of the State Code, and we are considering waiving the sound ordinance as it pertains to amplified sound and part of the firework display because of the noise. So financial, there's a small publication fee for the publication of the ordinance, and that has been approved as before. It's recommended that the City Council waive the reading of the ordinance by voice vote and then adopt by roll call.
May I entertain a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Aubrey makes the motion.
All second.
Grant seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prove the waiver. Now we go ahead and prove it. Roll call.
A motion to?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. Krista seconds.
Roll call. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
We got everybody to foster. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, I took the under under 35 minutes. I have my degree in wastewater treatment plants digestory. The City of Aramond wastewater treatment plant was constructed in 2008. It was designed to treat a maximum of 800,000 gallons of nitric oxide daily. Part of the wastewater treatment process is the separation of solids and liquids. Solids are removed using a filter press or similar water device to create bio sludge. The sludge is removed daily, but over the course of several years, that kind of sludge can form on the bottom of the digester basins, and it requires additional treatment cleaning. Currently, we're estimating out of that 800,000, nearly half of those digesters are full of sludge. But we're estimating 40,000 gallons. The cleaning of those digesters requires taking each base amount of surface one at a time. That includes emptying all the effluent and removing a heavy liquid via pumping it out, and then having any solid sludge deposits removed by pumping with a large back truck. Liquid sludge will be pumped out and ejected into farm ground by the city's sludge hauling contractor, Agro Environmental. Any remaining hardened sludge that cannot be pumped out will be removed by, disposed of by Mayor's Specialties, a local service company. And moving the sludge blanket will help the plant run efficiently and continue to meet the KDAG E-G guidelines as the city grows. And one of the reasons for implementing this is we want to get it down to a fresh start as far as an empty plant, so we can keep this plant efficient and really kind of gauge how much more growth we can handle before we need to expand that plant. I feel like we can double the size of the city with our current wastewater plant if it's running efficiently and properly. This is a drone view of our wastewater plant. We've got two trains in this plant. The digesters are these two basins at the very back. Those will be one at a time. Each side will be empty and cleaned out. The reason, or timeline on cleaning these sites. I called Aramond to talk to them. They said sometimes you need to clean them, sometimes you don't. There's no real time. There's no, like, set guideline like maintenance on something where they say every five years you clean them. Sometimes you may have to clean them depending on your plan. Five years, sometimes you may never have to clean them. Unfortunately for us, it looks like if, you know, 16 years in, we're cleaning this. Lots of reasons why, lots of questions why, but nothing solid. But we know that cleaning that will make a difference in our, in making the numbers. Cost to remove it and dispose of the sludge is as follows. Agro Environmental, it will do the liquid sludge removal, and that'll look at over $38,000. Mayor's Specialties, if needed, $7,900. And then a company called Velocity, we got around a six-inch pump to pull that liquid out for Agro Environmental. The reason we did not see multiple bids on this because they're the only local company that does this. We already are in a contract with them. They run sludge for us. They have it for several years. When we renewed that contract, I went out and looked nationally for companies. There are companies that do it. They, this company is actually about half the price of the other companies. And the nice thing about this Agro Environmental is they leave a semi out of plant. We drop our bio solids of sludge directly in that truck, and they haul it out. The other companies require us to pile up for six months. And with the proximity of cloverleaf subdivision, six months' worth of bio solids can get, you know, it can get to have a, and so we prefer not to do that unless we actually have to. So the total cost of this project would be $48,991. If it's approved, it would be allocated towards service fund, wastewater plant, or current maintenance. Questions?
Let's take, we have fertilizer byproduct here, but I guess not already.
There, it's, it's issue. Initially, we wanted to inject this on the city-owned farmland, and the farmer was on board with it. And his, his colleague talked him into not doing it because he wanted some fertilizer. So we were getting ready to do it, and I drive by and they're fertilizing. I'm like, oh, I call, I call the farmer, Mr. Smarish, and he says, what's going on here? Oh, they told me not to do it. This would have been free fertilizer, but he got talked out of it. So it's not costing us any more to move it elsewhere. It's the same cost, but they're going to put it on some farm ground near Garden Plain. You cannot, you cannot use bio sludge unless it's Class III, which is fully composted, which is a very rigorous process inside the city limits. It's against KDAG guidelines. Any additional questions?
I like that you call it sludge.
That's what we call it in the industry. It's sludge, bio sludge. Like, okay, so we go, it's cake. It's not cake you'd want to eat, but it's cake.
George, you want to volunteer to fill something with that?
I think I'm busy that day.
Yeah, that's, you know, working in wastewater in a plant takes a special ritual. It really does. It really does. So if there are no additional questions or comments, the recommendation that the City Council approve the wastewater treatment plant digestion cleaning for a amount of not to exceed $48,991.
I entertain a motion here.
I make a motion that we approve the wastewater treatment. I make the motion that we approve the wastewater treatment plant digester team for the amount not to exceed 48,991, zero, zero.
I say.
Brett makes the motion. Krista seconds. Ty goes to the lady. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. City Administrator report.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, a few items here to update you on the city operations, projects, and future agenda items. First one here, the alley on the west side of Main Street between Santa Fe and First. Those who've been back there know that it's been a mess, especially with the rain. There was a utility company that did some relocations a few weeks ago, and they didn't do the best job of putting it back to the way it needs to be when it was done. It did need a little work anyhow, but unfortunately, we've had pot hauling and mud mess ever since then, and the additional rain hasn't been helpful, but all that's to say, Public Works staff have been gathering bids to go in and do some excavation and to rock that. I would also add that over the last few weeks, staff have been working with Bond Council on a special assessment cost model that could finance the paving of that alley, but we need to complete this rocking project anyhow, because it's spring, and you guys probably know this, and dirt track out on Main Street, and it's just kind of a thing that we need to make of the past. So, anyhow, we may look in more of the special assessment cost model to put some pavement back there, but we're gonna make sure that that's something the property owners are in favor for before we approach you guys about that, so more to come. 183 Turn Lanes, final check plan due to KDOT this week. We anticipate advertising bids in June 18th with a letting on the 17th of July. If you remember, you guys advised to do the full closure on the north side of 183 and 54, so we could have a 60-day project instead of a 90-day project. So that's the plan, and we're sticking to it, unless we hear a request or changes from you guys sometime between now and, I would anticipate this work to start in the fall when all the other roadwork's done. Lots of other roadwork for discussion here, that's kind of the theme of the administrative report. So, Walnut Mill and Overlay begins tomorrow. Piercing Construction will take care of that work. South Walnut Street, starting at the trail to 23rd South, it'll take about seven days to complete. Traffic will be one-way southbound, open local traffic home. City staff have been out hanging door knockers, we started that last week. We've had ample conversation with the school district, as well as the rec director, and firm plans are in place, so they will start bright and early tomorrow and work for seven days and get Walnut knocked out, so. North Frontage Road reconstruction, the first phase of that, you know has already been completed. That was from the concrete east-west to Ramir, there's a Mill and Overlay down there. But, the next phase here includes full-depth reconstruction of the North Frontage Road between 199th and Casado. It's scheduled to begin Monday, June 10th, and will be completed by July 30th, so it's gonna be, go on for a little while. We are working out the exact traffic control plan, we think we've got it finalized, but we're gonna make one more touch point with the business owners, get the maps out, start advertising to the citizens and the stakeholders. But if you can visualize for a second, and sometimes I have to close my eyes to do that so I'm not falling asleep, but if you're heading westbound on 54, when you get to Casado, there's actually an access drive off of 54 to Casado that you can head north on. You can make that right turn or head north, then you can get into the appliance center parking lot, and all those parking lots to the west there between 199 and Casado, we're connecting all of those, and we'll have big flashing signs that say, "Businesses turn right, all businesses open." The city's undertaking some additional expense to help folks understand that they can still patronize those businesses during this lengthy closing. A couple of the businesses right off 199 aren't connected through that parking lot chain that we're creating, because folks are taking 199 anyway to get there, they're not subverted with the frontage road to get there. So, I'm really proud of the way our staff, specifically Brooke and Tina, Gary Medley, and Harland, have worked with the contractors and the business owners to try to make this as painless as possible. We know it's still going to be inconvenient, but they worked really hard to limit that inconvenience and to communicate, and we'll continue to do that. Second Street Mill and Overlay, between Walnut and Main Street, is scheduled to begin a week from today, Monday, June 10th, and that will be completed by June 14th. That one's kind of a quicker one. We're gonna hang door knockers by the end of this week, so they have ample time to know that that work is coming. And then the First Street Mill and Overlay, as well as some reconstruction, it's slated to begin June 17th and will be completed by June 28th. The First Street work will be completed one block at a time. First Street on Walnut to Spruce is a two-inch Mill and Overlay, since there will be some complete reconstruction near the intersections of Spruce and Pine, the remainder will need to be constructed one block at a time in order to keep access for homeowners. So, I would say, middle of this week, our city staff will be knocking on all the doors around that area. For those who they are unable to touch base with, they'll get a door knocker, hang on their doorknob. It's really important to us that the citizens don't just wake up one day and see the work happening, we want to make sure we're communicating to them with at least a few days' notice, that's our guarantee. Of course, sometimes emergencies happen, but with roadwork, that's not so much a thing. We should be able to get out ahead of it and communicate. The WAMFO public meeting, that's gonna be this Wednesday, June 5th, at Pathway Church from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. WAMFO is studying the need for more service and opportunities to better connect suburban and outlined communities with Wichita, particularly for work trips. So, I kind of have this vision of maybe a park and ride at 183rd and 54. KDOT's got this big massive right-of-way right there, and the southwest of that intersection seems to be like a perfect place where somebody could ride their bike or walk over there and jump in a shuttle and get to work in Wichita and come back in the same day. These are the types of projects that could come to fruition if we're attending meetings like this and giving citizen feedback, so hopefully that one's well attended. The stormwater assessment, so the rain has kind of delayed some of the survey work that we were hoping to completed last week, but we're trying to do a little survey and design so we can develop a plan set to advertise bids. We've kind of gotten to a point now where we're taking one by the apple at a time. The first project we're looking at is the drainage system on the south side of Kellogg, kind of near the paint addition. That's kind of Project A. There should be shooting some survey on that if they hadn't already. Harland's crews working on that as they have time. And then, Project B jumps across Kellogg on the north side, and there's a drainage channel supposed to be that runs alongside Beacon Church there off of Kellogg. It's a heavily vegetated area, we're gonna be working on that drainage channel too. One of the other things that we had done was we extended the project area of the R-Cut to include additional ditch reshaping, there's a change order that incorporated that. We're actually gonna even do that even further, but KDOT gave us their scouts honor that they're gonna come in and do a ditch maintenance project a little bit further out from the project area of the R-Cut. So, just those few, I mentioned three or four, we should see that work completed on those items, I would say, this year. You couple that with the big ditch that was just done on 199, and I think we're really starting to see some progress on improving our stormwater system. We've got a couple other areas that are touching the county, that we're working diligently with the county on getting those addressed, so starting to see some progress, hoping to get from the planning phase to the actual construction phase on some of these. Row Water District Four, I know Harland's looking into designing that pump station, and so, we're gonna probably have a gin item on that, I'd say, in the coming months. That's kind of the, I use the term crawl, walk, run, that's kind of the walk portion of that, so we'll see something on that here pretty soon. Budget workshops, the 2025 budget season is upon us, those workshops will begin at the next council meeting, with several anticipated over the summer. We kind of break down each cost center, Matt, our CFO, will be leading the way on that. Some of these workshops will likely occur concurrently with our newly added noon hour council meeting that we want to have once a month. Ryan's team will draft us an ordinance to create this additional council meeting. The meetings that we have scheduled are codified, so we gotta pass an ordinance to add in another one if we're gonna continue to do, start doing that monthly, so I'm gonna have those guys get that ordinance ready to go for the June 17th council meeting, probably start having a noon, one-hour-long council meeting once a month in July, and we'll just do that thereafter. It's kind of odd to say we need to do that, because the meeting tonight is presumably going to be short, but you know, typically we're 10 to 15 agenda items, so that's kind of the purpose there. The CIP, we're still working on that. You know, now that we've got Ryan in the fold, we're gonna hit another gear that's gonna give us more opportunity to be chipping away on it. Community development update, we've got a planning commission meeting a week from today, that's Monday, June 10th, for the Maple Tree zoning amendments. A few future agenda items, I mentioned the stormwater projects, there is a stormwater management fee associated with that. The 167th edition petitions, we anticipate receiving those soon. The Arbor Creek South petitions, same is true. The Goddard Chamber of Commerce President and CEO will be here to deliver their quarterly update. Our new library director, Terry, will be here to do the library's quarterly update. Terry will be presenting an item related to storage of documents, and that's an exciting one, but when you think about some of the storage space that might creep up fresh, you can see why it's important, and that's what that Laserfish Cloudside package is. And then I anticipate a note sale resolution for the 23rd Street South Edition. One last item I penciled in at the bottom, the Linear Park Play Equipment bids. Council tabled that item until we had multiple bids for that project, we anticipate we should have some bids for you unlikely by June 17th, just because of the depth of this project, probably more likely the first council meeting in July, that we will bring that project back to you the night we're done with this business and have multiple bids for the Linear Park inclusive play equipment edition. That's all I got for you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Governor, Bobby Thomas. Krista.
Welcome, Ryan, again. Happy to have you as part of the staff. I'd like to thank the North Frontage Road businesses and Piercings and Public Works for working together on that. It's good to see that it's happening effectively. And also, thank you to the wastewater treatment plant workers for doing the dirty work. Thankless job, so thank you. And then, is Sunday the Main Street Market?
Yes.
Is Sunday the Main Street Market from 2:00 to 5:00?
2:00 to 5:00.
Okay.
She said it all.
She does. She said it all. She said it all. She did. One thing.
One thing.
I know you're Main Street Market this weekend, but also the Lake Captain Car shows this weekend, on Sunday.
Park is more important, right?
Yeah, right.
You have an opportunity to get to events on one Sunday.
That's right, you have two, you can get to two events on one Sunday.
Aubrey.
Uh, staff, great job. Brian, welcome, brother.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Let it be noted that the meeting ran 44 minutes and 35 seconds. I seek the motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Krista makes the motion. Aubrey seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.